Good evening, everyone. Today is May 20, 2019. The 36th meeting of the 23rd Council will come to order. Counselor Sanchez may participate via telephone. All other counselors are present. If not, should be here shortly. Now, we are on a moment of silence with the Pledge of Legions led by Counselor Davis.
Civic Plaza parking passes are provided for members of the public. You can obtain a parking pass from council staff at the sign-up table. The council will take a break approximately about 7:00 PM this evening if needed. We want tonight's proceedings to be as civil and respectful as possible. Please do not make any personal attacks, and please no applause or other outbursts during the meeting. The meeting will go a lot smoother if we are respectful of one another. We are now on Item 3, Proclamations and Presentations. Counselor Winter and Borrego.
Thank you, Madam President. I would ask that Georgia Armijo Brasher and her family, and also, I think she has a number of family members, could you all come up with her, please? I think we also have former Counselor Michael Brasher and Commissioner Michael Brasher, and I think that's one and the same. So, Counselor Winter, would you like to start?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. Georgia Armijo Brasher has more than four years of professional experience, beginning her career as a classroom teacher, and since working in studies required in management and leadership. And whereas Ms. Armijo Brasher helped launch the City of Albuquerque and Albuquerque Public Schools partnership, creating nationally accredited, accessible, affordable, and quality full-day, year-round preschool and toddler programs for working parents and serving hundreds of children zero to five years of age. And whereas Ms. Armijo Brasher managed the City of Albuquerque Child and Family Development Services Division and the National Comprehensive Research Grant, and whereas in December 2009, the mayor appointed Ms. Armijo Brasher the Department of Senior Affairs Director where she was responsible for an annual budget in excess of $13 million, 200 employees, six senior centers, two multigenerational centers, sports and fitness centers, and 19 nutrition satellite meal sites. And under Ms. Armijo Brasher's direction, Albuquerque Senior Centers gained accreditation for the first time in the city's history and...
And whereas in 2017, Chief Justice Charles Daniels appointed Ms. Armijo Brasher to serve as a member of the New Mexico Adult Guardianship Study Commission, where she worked with other commissioners to study the state's guardianship system. And whereas Ms. Armijo Brasher received the Dixon Award from the Foundation of Open Government for her resolution to open the guardianship committee meetings, thereby allowing persons presenting information and opinions to do so in open forum, adhering to the City of Albuquerque's Open Meetings Act. And whereas Ms. Armijo Brasher voluntarily serves as the host of the radio program concerning New Mexico on Public Radio KANW FM, KANW, to address the problems, interests, and needs of the community, and broadcasts New Mexico's music dedications each Saturday morning. And whereas Ms. Georgia Armijo Brasher received the Outstanding New Mexico Women Governors Award in 2008, and in 2015 and 16, she was recognized in the Outstanding St. Pius Alumni Hall of Honor and Visit Albuquerque awarded Ms. Armijo Brasher the 2018 Albuquerque Meeting Hero Award for bringing the 2019 National Senior Games to the city of Albuquerque. And in 2019, Ms. Armijo Brasher received Outstanding Community Voluntarism Award. She serves on the New Mexico State Commission for Community Voluntarism. Be it proclaimed that the council, the governing body of the city of Albuquerque, hereby recognizes Georgia Armijo Brasher and honors her significant achievements for and contributions to the city of Albuquerque. Thank you, Ms...
Thank you.
And I'll call you, Georgia, if that's okay. Would you like to say a few words?
If I may. Take my breath away. I stand here with a humble heart and great gratitude for this recognition and the amazing opportunity to have served the city and the people of Albuquerque. I have had a wonderful career, working with wonderful people, five mayors exactly. And thank you, I'd like to say thank you to Mayor Berry for giving me the chance to work with the Department of Senior Affairs. And I want to thank Mayor Keller for all his commitment and city effort in preparing for the incredible, record-breaking National Senior Games. And Counselor Winter, we'll see you on the field. Counselors, thank you for honoring our children with child development centers and our seniors with centers and multigenerational centers. What a difference you make. Your work is important and appreciated. Counselor Borrego, I know you will be working on a new multigenerational center on the West Side. Best to you.
Thank you.
My first boss, I have to mention, was Michael Passy, a real visionary, and Olivia Rivera working to create the child development programs. Jolene and Wayne Mays helped bring the highest standard of quality with the National Senior Center accreditation. But to those that sacrificed the very most, my family, Michael, my son Ivan, my daughter Simone, and my grandchildren, Scarlett and Sophia, and where's Robert? Right here. He's the tallest one. Thank you for all you have given me and the support that you have offered. How important it is to capture the story and not lose the knowledge of what has gone before, and to be ready for change, progress, and the future. I will continue a life of service. Counselors, thank you so very much. Mil gracias, and let's all celebrate the wonders of the city. Thank you so very much.
I've known Georgia for many, many years, and she's always been a professional in everything that she does. And I would like to invite you to come and receive your proclamation with your family. And thank you also to our former city counselor, always the city counselor, and county commissioner, Michael Brasher, for his contributions. Counselor Winter, real quickly.
And just remember, the senior games are coming to Albuquerque on the dates, June...
Fourteenth.
Fourteenth for 10 days. Everybody come out, we still need volunteers. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming. You live right down the street from me. I live on a road. You live on Condesa? Yeah, I know where it is. It's good to see you. Thank you, Counselor. Thank you. Thank you, Georgia. Next item is Item 4, Economic Development Discussion. There is none, so we will move on to Item Number 5, Administration Question and Answer Period. Counselor, are there any questions for the administration? Seeing none, we will move on to the Item 6, The Journal. Counselor Borrego.
Thank you, Madam President. I move approval of the May 6 Journal.
There's a motion and a second for approval. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. Motion passes. We are now moved some things around. We are now on Item 14, Final Actions. Counselor Borrego and Sanchez. So, Counselor Borrego, R4?
Thank you, Madam President. This is amending the City Council Rules of Procedure, Article 2, Section 1 and 2, dealing with the timing of the election of President and Vice President, Article 2, Section 3, relating to the powers and duties of the President, Article 1, Section 8H, and Article 3, Section 4B, to adjust cross-references. I move a do-pass. And this is in your iPads, Counselor, if you need to look at it.
Second. So, there's a motion and a second for a do-pass of R4. We have a couple of amendments, I think we'll start there. There's a floor amendment number one, and this is on page 14, line 28, insert the following word after person other than its staff. And the explanation on this is this amendment clarifies the procedure for the city councils' lujo accept or reject hearing. With this amendment, it will make it clear that the council does not hear from the parties or the public at the accept or reject hearing, but it does hear from its staff about the lujo recommendation. So, there's a motion, is there a second?
A second.
There's a motion and a second for floor amendment number one. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. Motion passes. We are now, moved some things around, we are now on Item 14, Final Actions. Counselor Borrego and Sanchez. So, Counselor Borrego, R4?
Thank you, Madam President. This is amending the City Council Rules of Procedure, Article 2, Section 1 and 2, dealing with the timing of the election of President and Vice President, Article 2, Section 3, relating to the powers and duties of the President, Article 1, Section 8H, and Article 3, Section 4B, to adjust cross-references. I move a do-pass. And this is in your iPads, Counselor, if you need to look at it.
Second. So, there's a motion and a second for a do-pass of R4. We have a couple of amendments, I think we'll start there. There's a floor amendment number one, and this is on page 14, line 28, insert the following word after person other than its staff. And the explanation on this is this amendment clarifies the procedure for the city councils' lujo accept or reject hearing. With this amendment, it will make it clear that the council does not hear from the parties or the public at the accept or reject hearing, but it does hear from its staff about the lujo recommendation. So, there's a motion, is there a second?
A second.
There's a motion and a second for floor amendment number one. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. Motion passes. We are now on floor amendment number two. This is, it states on page 15, line 12, insert the new section in numeric sequence as follows and renumber the remaining sections accordingly. Section 10, Article 3, Section 11, Voting of the City of Albuquerque Rules of Procedure is hereby amended as follow. A council may request a vote by telephone or other similar device when a medical emergency, medical or emergency situation exists, or when official city business, or significant personal event, or a commitment that renders attendance in person unduly burdensome. A request for such voting privilege must be made by the President of the Council, who shall determine whether a qualifying situation exists. Such voting can only take place upon approval of the President of the Council, and provided the counselor who has been granted such voting privileges can be heard on a speaker to enable the council and audience to determine the counselor is speaking and casting a vote. Number 2, update the bill to title the reference a change to Article 3, Section 8, relating to voting by phone. Explanation on this is that a president counselor may only vote by phone with the President's approval where a medical or emergency situation exists. This amendment proposes to recognize that voting by phone may also be permitted by President to accommodate significant personal events or commitments. Second. So, there's a motion and a second for floor amendment number 2. All those in favors, is there any discussion? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no.
No.
Okay, so if we could show a hands, all those in favor say yes, and raise your hand. Did you get that? Opposed, no, and raise your hand. The motion passes, 5-3. Next is floor amendment number 3. This is on page 15, line 12, insert the new section in numeric sequence as follows and renumber the remaining sections accordingly. Article 3, Section 21, Staff of the City of Albuquerque City Council Rules of Procedure is hereby amended as follows and add a new subsection E. E, contractors, contractors, contractors of the city council performing services that are to those of the council staff or in place of those traditionally performed by council staff shall be aware of these rules and shall conform with the relevant provisions that are otherwise applicable to staff. The director shall direct any contractors who are performing services for the benefit of the full council to use best efforts to address the interests and questions of various counselors equally to the greatest extent practical. Update the bill title to reference a change Article 3, Section 21, relating to contractors for the council. Explanation that present council rules include certain provisions that guide council staff. This amendment would make these rules also applicable to contractors who are performing staff-like services. So, are there any questions on this? Oh, second, is there a second? There's a motion and a second for approval of floor amendment number 3. All those in favor say yes, and raise your hand.
Yes.
Opposed, no.
No.
Motion passes. So, now we are back on the bill.
Madam President, one of the things that this amendment does is to update the dates of election of the President and Vice President that corresponds with the change in the election date that we're anticipating for this coming fall. Council staff identified another reference to December that relates to the date that committee appointments are made. And I'd like to go ahead and try to read that amendment into the record so that we can get that cleaned up right now as well. And after I read it, we'll need a motion and a second and a vote. The amendment would be to amend Article 2, Section 4, relating to committees of the council. All committee assignments shall be subject to the approval of the city council at the first meeting of the month, strike December, insert January, at which the President is elected. Subsection F, each counselor shall, insofar as possible, change one substantive committee assignment every strike December, insert January, when the committees are constituted. And the explanation is that this amendment corrects the new date of the election of President as it relates to the committee assignments.
I would like to move that amendment.
So, there's a motion and a second for floor amendment number 4. All those in favor say yes, and raise your hand.
Yes.
Opposed, no, and raise your hand. Motion carries. Now, we are back on the bill, so is there anyone signed up to speak on this? No? Okay. So, I will turn it back over to Counselor Borrego to close.
I urge your support, Counselors, with the amendments.
So, there's a motion and a second for a do-pass as amended of R4. All those in favor say yes, and raise your hand.
Yes.
No, and no, raise your hand. Motion passes unanimously. So, I guess at this point, can Counselor Sanchez call in? Does the rule go into effect automatically?
Madam President, the rule does go into effect immediately. If Counselor Sanchez would like to join the meeting, he can do that now or later during the course of the meeting.
Okay. I think if you could just give him a call, if he plans on being here, he'll be here for the entire meeting.
If Madam President...
Counselor Harris?
Counselor's going to get that done right now.
Yes, there was a long oral amendment that Mr. Melendez read in, so maybe we could do something at the beginning of the meeting, or just pass out the actual amended rules. And if anyone wants to comment on them, just to make sure that they're correct at the next meeting, I think that might be appropriate.
Thank you, Counselor Harris. So, now we are on Item 7, Communications and Introductions. Are there any changes to the letter of introduction? Counselor Gibson.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I'm going to move that the rules be suspended for the purpose of pulling R 147 out of Finance and Government Operations Committee and placing it on tonight's agenda for final action. R 147 is accepting the report and recommendations from the Center for Community Progress in creating a vacant, abandoned, substandard property working group and making an appropriation for that.
So, there's a motion and a second, all those in favor, oh, sorry. Counselor Harris?
It sounds like a good thing, but is there any rush for this, to not go through the committee process?
Madam Chair, the reason I'm pulling it out of the committee is that, is just for timeliness of the report. Not that the committee's going to, we're in a rush to do the committee, but just because the report came out, you all should have copies of that, paper copy and electronic copies are on the D7 website. I don't, I think they were too large to email out. But you should have a paper copy on your desks and have access to the e-copy.
Any other questions from counselors? No? So, there's a motion and a second, all those, we need two-thirds of the council, two-thirds vote, so all those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no.
Yes.
So, I can see, I was going to announce it, I think Counselor Sanchez has joined us. Welcome, Counselor.
I'm here.
Okay.
Thank you, Counselor President.
So, next is my...
So, was that unanimous?
Yes, that was unanimous, sorry. Next is me. Move that the rules be suspended for the purpose of placing EC 406 on tonight's agenda for final action. EC 406 is approval of outside counsel for legal services agreement with Lynn and Associates LLC. Are there any questions? No? So, with that, is there a, is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second, all those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. Motion passes. Next item, I move that the rules be suspended for the purpose of pulling R 138 out of Committee of the Whole and placing it on tonight's agenda for final action. R 138 is appropriating funds for operating government of the city of Albuquerque for fiscal year 2020, beginning July 1, 2019, and ending July 30, 2020, adjusting fiscal year 2019 appropriations and appropriating capital funds. There's a motion and a second, all those in favor say yes, and say yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no. Motion passes. Next is, I move the rules be suspended for the purpose of pulling R 149 out of Finance and Government Operations and placing it on tonight's agenda for a final action. R 149 is approving and adopting the 2019 Action Plan and Program Investment Summary for the Expenditure of Community Development Block Grant Home Investment Partnerships Program and Emergency Solutions Grant Funds, providing an appropriation to the Department of Family and Community Services for 2019 U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development Entitlement Funds. There's a motion and a second. Any questions? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. Motion passes. Now, we have Counselor Borrego.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. I move approval of the letter of introduction.
There's a motion and a second, all those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. Motion passes. Now, we are on reports of committees. Counselor Benton.
Thank you, Madam President. The Land Use Planning and Zoning Committee met on Wednesday, May 15, 2019, and reports out the following items. In the matter of R 102, that it do pass and be acted upon at the meeting at which it is reported. In the matter of 146, that it do pass, as amended, and be acted on at the meeting at which it is reported. I make a motion to accept the committee reports.
There's a motion and a second, all those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. Motion passes. Counselor Jones.
Thank you, Madam President. The Committee of the Whole met on Thursday, May 16, 2019, and reports out the following items. In the matter of R 138, that it be without recommendation. In the matter of R 139, 140, and O 55 and 63, that they do pass. I make a motion to accept the committee reports.
There's a motion and a second, all those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. Motion passes. We are now on deferrals and withdrawals. Counselors, are there any deferrals or withdrawals at this time? Counselor Davis.
Thank you, Madam President. I move the deferral on R 78, a new set of standard dwelling or structure in need of abatement at 115 Charleston Southeast. This property has been under redevelopment, and so I move a deferral until August 19.
There's a motion and a second for deferral, all those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. Motion passes. Counselor Harris?
Thank you, Madam President. I move a deferral of R 146, amending the boundary of the East Gateway Metropolitan redevelopment area to designate an additional area for inclusion in the MRA. Move a deferral until June 17.
There's a motion and a second for deferral, all those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. Motion passes. There's a two-second delay with Counselor Sanchez. Next is R 102, amending the boundary of the West Central Metropolitan redevelopment area to designate an additional area for inclusion within the MRA. I move a deferral until June 17. There's a motion and a second for deferral, all those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no.
Yes.
Motion passes. We are now on the consent agenda. Are there any changes to the consent agenda? Seeing no changes, I guess this question is for staff. I have someone here who actually is one of the persons who potentially could be appointed to a committee and would like to speak. I don't know if she signed up or not, but can I allow...
Madam Chair, yes, you can allow her to speak right now.
Okay. Ms. Adina Martinez.
Good evening, Counselors, Madam President. I'm here to, hey, thank you for this opportunity to be part of the ADA Council, because I feel like my point of view will be valuable to the committee, so I'm very excited and very honored to be considered for approval. So, I just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez.
Thank you for being here.
So, with the additional individuals, if there's anyone else here on tonight's consent agenda who are being appointed to serve on a border commission, can you please stand if you are in the audience? I want to thank you all for your willingness to serve. This is so delightful to see so many people interested in volunteering their time, so thank you for being here this evening. Thank you. So, Counselor Borrego.
With that, Madam President, I move approval of the consent agenda.
There's a motion and a second for approval of the consent agenda, all those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. Motion passes. Welcome aboard, everyone. Next item, we have, we are on Item 10, General Public Comments. There will be a two-minute time limit. The light on the podium will be green for the first minute and a half, and then the light will turn yellow, and the bell will ring indicating you have 30 seconds remaining to wrap up your comments. At two minutes, the light will turn red and ring to indicate that your time is up. So, our first person signed up to speak this evening is Mr. Don Schrader, and I just want to thank my daughter Janice for bringing Adina here this evening.
If we humans do not make huge changes in how we live, we will totally destroy up to 1 million kinds of plants and animals. If we humans all suddenly vanished, the other animals and plants would benefit greatly. If all other animals and plants suddenly vanished, we humans would all die. We need them. They do not need us. We totally depend on them. The American dream of big house, fancy car, many high-tech gadgets, flying thousands of miles to vacation, eating meat and dairy, is a nightmare disaster for life on earth. Will young people 50 years from now curse us today for being too blind, too lazy, too spoiled, too stubborn, too selfish? spoiled, too stubborn, too selfish to wake up and make huge changes? Regardless of what other people do, I am responsible for how I travel, what I buy, what I eat, how I poison the earth. We all, we all stand on the edge of the cliff. Progress means stepping backward to enjoy a much simpler, much healthier life.
Thank you, Mr. Schrader. Rudolf Serano, followed by Lucille Long, followed by Dr. Irene Vasquez.
Madam President, Clarissa Peña, members of the city, invisible councillor Sanchez. We're making changes. We're growing the South Valley, that's, you know, it's a, it's a big move. We've been doing that for twenty years. I remember when we start Christianizing that area and we put a, we start putting businesses and now it's gonna be a new city. We're gonna see a city as big as Albuquerque and if you go, Christian Central and all that side, it's gonna be a new Albuquerque. And I think we have to invest, we have to invest wisely, we have to think about water. And I'm gonna put my finger on water until I see it happening. Right now, we have new options, you know, we starting looking at cities recycling rain. You know, I wanna see, you know, our roofs recycling that water, purifying that water and coming it back to our systems. Other thing that is happening, we're getting hotter, the fires are gonna come here and we can start making places where we can storage water, so when our firefighters are coming, they're not too way far away from where they can get more water. So there's few ideas, you know, but the thought is water, you know, and the thought is pure water. We're gonna have a lot of rain, we may have flooding, we may have flooding in that, we're gonna have flooding maybe in those areas that are contaminated. And we have to put a good eye on the air force, making sure that overflow is not gonna bring that contamination into your old streets. That's what I, you know, that's, that's what I got and let's, let's just push it because it's coming. It's coming down up north. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Serano. Lucille Long, followed by Dr. Irene Vasquez.
Good evening, Madam Councillors and the rest of the councillors. I'm Lucille Long and I'm from the Nob Hill area and I wanted to commend those that have been working so effortlessly on public safety in our area. And I also wanted to bring up some problems that we continue to have in our parks, and that's homeless trash, needles in the parks, and also drug use in our parks. And so some of my vision for Nob Hill is to see more presence of police in the neighborhood, along the side streets, and also have the council consider a true needle exchange program because currently it is our understanding that there's boxes of needles that are being given to people that are injecting. And the other thing that some other cities are doing is that they have needles, true exchange programs where they mark needles, and they also have people who are users self-dispense, and that's how they trade their needles instead of giving boxes and boxes of needles where children can get injured and people can get hurt and possibly die with liver problems. We really want that consideration to be made with this council. The other thing that I wanted to say is that in Nob Hill, we really promote the transparency of government, so I hope that you take those thoughts into consideration.
Madam President.
Councillor Davis.
Thank you so much for being here and I appreciate very much your participation in this and everybody in Nob Hill lately. We've had a hard time in the last few weeks and it's really given us an opportunity to reconsider and to take a step back and look at what we're doing. I wanna acknowledge really quickly the administration and the police department who stepped up to help us roll out new bicycles for our problem response teams that are in our neighborhoods, that are working neighborhood to neighborhood. In fact, they're working on a project right now, two of our bike officers with the Nob Hill Neighborhood Association around Morningside Park for some of those issues you're working on. If you wanna give your information to some of our staff, I'll be sure to invite you to those meetings and actually we'll be covering some of that this, I think it's this week, the third Thursday of every month at our community police council, that's gonna be on the agenda and we invite you to be there.
Okay, I just have a question, is, if it's okay councillor Davis?
Our rules don't allow that, but I tell you what, I'm happy to sidebar with you if that's okay, if you wanna follow up.
Okay, sure. Transparency in government.
Thanks.
I should've been earlier.
Thank you, Dr. Irene Vasquez, followed by Roberta Marquez, followed by Dr. Ray Hernandez Duran.
Council President and councilpersons, my name is Irene Vasquez and I'm the Chair of Chicanan-Chicano Studies and the Southwest Hispanic Research Institute at the University of New Mexico. I thank you for hearing public comment. I am here to respectfully ask for your support in favor of a Chicanan-Chicano Studies art exhibit and catalog because it has several important public impacts, including public knowledge, audience reach, content curriculum development, and educational impact. I'm here with several of my colleagues, students, staff, and community members. This project is a historic undertaking and New Mexico is a rich site for exploring the critical contributions that New Mexican artists have made to the civil rights movement, to the Chicanan-Chicano movement, and to public art advocacy. Chicanan-Chicano Studies is celebrating its fiftieth anniversary, an anniversary that we owe the founders of this program. We have developed a two-year series of programming involving faculty, students, staff, and also Albuquerque high school teachers and students. The request for support will help launch the exhibit and the catalog. Importantly, the catalog is going to correct a mismatch that exists between the foundational impact New Mexican artists have had on Chicana and Chicano art and the dearth of attention they're given in the current literature and scholarship. All across the United States, educational institutions and civic organizations are commemorating this rich history of the emergence of Chicana and Chicano art now dating back over fifty years. So this project will ensure that our youth and students are familiar with New Mexico's rich history, the contributions of its artists to public memory-making and art, and it is in line with things we hope to see happening in education.
Thank you, thank you. Actually, we have somebody who's gonna make a comment.
Dr. Vasquez?
Councillor Borrego.
Did you wanna finish your comments? I'd also like to make a comment to you. If you'd like to finish your comments, go ahead.
Oh, I was just gonna add that it's in line with the educational needs that have been identified in the Yasi Martinez case, and so we also hope to bring in public high school teachers and students into the, into tours that we will sponsor, a symposium and speaker series, and the catalog will ensure its preservation after the event.
I just wanted to mention to you that one of my first jobs with the university was working for Chicano Studies, and I won't mention what years those were in, but I would be very interested in knowing more about your program. And also, I would encourage you to, there's a couple of people that I would encourage you to invite, of course, Father Antonio Mondragon, who used to be the executive director of Who I Worked Under, and also Tobias Duran, who did a lot of historic documentation for the Borrelas neighborhood. So if you would reach out to me, I'd appreciate that.
I certainly will. Thank you.
Councillor Benton.
Dr. Vasquez, thanks for bringing this forward to the council and I do encourage all of us to support this tonight. You know, this really is critical to our community as a whole. When we look at, at how important our unique culture is to our sense of place here in Albuquerque and New Mexico and how that helps lift us all up, but also is so important to our attractiveness as a, as a destination for visitors and for new investment in our community. The arts and culture and our unique arts and culture is so important, so thank you, Dr. Vasquez.
Thank you, thank you. Our next speaker is Roberta Marquez, followed by Dr. Ray Hernandez Duran.
Thank you for having me this evening, council president and councilmembers. My name is Roberta Marquez and I'm here to advocate for this exhibition catalog that she spoke about so eloquently. I represent probably some of the artists of that time. I was a student in New Mexico Highlands University during the late sixties, early seventies, and coming from a small town, being born and raised in Tucumcari, New Mexico, I go to New Mexico Highlands University, and it was right at the crux of the civil rights movement, and it was real awakening time for me and my peers and everybody during that time. And so it was during that time that we had a college professor, Pedro Rodriguez, who came in from South, I believe Texas, and created these courses to teach mural and to teach Chicano art and to teach and help us understand that we also can express ourselves, our culture, our language, our identity through art. And so it was a real awakening time for me and my peers during that time, and I think we have a lot of stories to tell about the time and about who we were and as young people coming from rural, small towns in New Mexico and going to college, getting educated and learning about ourselves and our history, which we, which was sorely lacked in our education, our high school education. So I appreciate any support and advocacy you can have for this exhibition catalog and for this project that has been created. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Dr. Ray Hernandez Duran, followed by Trish Martinez, followed by Mesha Sida.
Good evening, esteemed councilmembers, and thank you for providing us an opportunity to comment. I'm here to voice my support for the exhibition and the larger program that my colleagues have been talking to you about this evening. I'm an associate professor of art history in the Department of Art. I'm one of the specialists in Latin American and U.S. Latino art history, and my colleague Irene Vasquez invited me to co-curate this exhibition with her, which as has been mentioned, is focusing on a missing period in the history of art, not just in New Mexico, but of the U.S. In terms of the field of Chicano Studies and Chicano history, New Mexico is present. In terms of the history of Chicano art, New Mexico is missing. This is not just an issue that is significant for these particular fields, but more broadly speaking, for the fields of the history of art in the U.S., as for the history of art, this is a glaring omission, and it's an omission that is part of a larger systemic problem that completely marginalizes and leaves out the traditions and the histories of our communities as Latinos, Hispanics, Chicanos, you know. So this project, which will consist of the exhibition focused on six artists who were active during that first generation of the movement in the sixties and seventies, is a corrective, to not only fill in the gap within the history of New Mexican art and Chicano art, but also to contribute to the development of the discussion of marginalized communities in the history of U.S. art. So it's a very significant project. I've been working hard with Irene on this. We're really looking forward to making this happen. The UNM Art Museum, since this is a UNM project, and it's really a collaboration between Chicanan-Chicano Studies and the Department of Art, but also would address the interests and needs of other departments or units at the university, as well as other institutions in the community. The UNM Art Museum has expressed interest. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Trish Martinez.
Good evening, Madam President and councilpersons. My name is Tricia Martinez and I am a summer doctoral student from the Department of American Studies and graduate assistant from the Department of Chicanan-Chicano Studies. As part of my academic journey, I have been blessed to draw upon my northern New Mexican heritage and create a knowledge base on Manito culture, history, and migration experiences. With that said, I am a strong advocate for the Chicanan-Chicano Studies art movement catalog that will focus on the work and activism of our very own New Mexican artists. I emphasize the value of this because so much of our distinguished New Mexican history is often generalized as part of the larger Mexican or Mexican-American narrative, and I also wanna highlight the significance of this collective and the momentum of this movement. To have the artists, the scholars, the academic institutions aligned with the city to collaborate and produce a unique New Mexican cultural resource is an asset that student, students and community members alike can draw upon for generations to come. To conclude, I ask you to consider the value of art, why people create it, the history it tells, and how important it is for Nuevo Mexicanos to share their stories through this medium. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mahesh Sida, followed by Justin Chaney, followed by Sandra Adonakis.
Madam President, members of the council, my name is Mahesh Sida with the American Heart Association, and we're here to talk about briefly about, you know, complete streets amendments. Councillor Benton has been introduced, and a lot of people wonder what American Heart Association is doing with complete streets. I think the issue, it's one of our priority policy projects, and if you have access to, you know, safe roads, you know, walking, riding, you know, promotes healthy living style, and healthy living style, you know, translates to healthy heart and, you know, no strokes. So here we are. So as you all know, I mean Albuquerque has the, is ranked number seventeenth in the country in terms of pedestrian safety. I think twenty seventeen, I think we had like thirty-five pedestrians, you know, killed in Albuquerque streets and roads, and year prior to that was twenty-two. So you had a thirty-seven percent increase in pedestrian fatalities, and we commend councillor Benton for, you know, spearheading this initiative, and we also commend Mayor Keller for his Vision Zero, which goes hand in hand with the, you know, a more enhanced, effective, you know, complete streets ordinance, and we urge this body to support this ordinance, and it will have a long-term effect on people living in Albuquerque, you know, will improve their health, you know, access, easy access to communities, schools, parks, and also people visiting Albuquerque and people, I live in Santa Fe, I commute here, so a lot of people commute to this city, so it's a good ordinance and we commend and we urge you to support this bill. Thank you.
Councillor Benton.
I just wanna thank Mahesh and the, and the Heart Association for their advocacy for this and also the AARP for being an advocate for complete streets, so we'll enjoy discussion as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Justin Chaney, followed by Sandra Adonakis, followed by Deborah Inman.
Thank you, Madam President, councilmembers. My name is Justin Chaney, president of the Albuquerque Area Firefighters. I stand before you today in support of the Fire Life Safety Bill as well as the cost recovery initiative set forth in this year's budget. With your firefighters taking over a hundred and ten thousand calls a year, staffing has become a critical issue. We believe that these two initiatives will help take care of the staffing issues that we are having currently in your city. We urge your support on making sure that these enter into this year's budget. Thank you.
Councillor Harris.
Yes, can you come back? It seems to me that perhaps the news articles, I think I saw an article on it, their TV reports also, but now are these payments, they're gonna be coming from individuals or pretty much are primarily insurance companies? I mean, how do these get reimbursed?
Madam President, councillor Harris, that's, that's exactly right. They will be billed to the insurance companies. So this is something that's already set in the insurance initiatives that's going on. When I have a insurance plan with, for my auto, this is something that's already in there, this is something that's been allowed in New Mexico, we've just never taken advantage of this.
Okay, thank you, because I think that if you read that article, you could be left the impression that people are gonna be injured and home and then they're gonna get a bill from the city. the city saying, "You have to pay us," you know, whatever, because we helped you. And I think that's what concerned people, but that's very unlikely to happen. Is that what you're saying?
Madam President, Councilor Harris, that's absolutely right. I think you are correct in saying if you would have read that article, it was a little misleading.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Sandra Adonakis, followed by Deborah Inman.
Thank you, Madam President and Council Members. I'm Sandra Adonakis. I work for the American Cancer Society, Cancer Action Network. I'm an Albuquerque resident, and I'm here tonight because we support the updates to the Complete Streets ordinance as introduced this evening. Physical activity actually decreases your risk of cancer, and it decreases the risk of dying from cancer. And we think it's important to have a supportive physical environment so that all individuals in our society have really genuine opportunities to make healthy choices and choose healthy behaviors. In fact, the American Cancer Society, Cancer Action Network recommends that local and state governments provide safe, enjoyable, and accessible environments for physical activity, for transportation, and for recreation in communities, and Complete Streets is an important part of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Deborah Inman, followed by Tad Nemenski, followed by Sarah Pierpont.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam President and Members of the Council. My name is Deborah Inman. I'm the Senior Vice President of Business Development for Albuquerque Economic Development. As you are aware, companies often consider multiple states when looking to expand. In addition to the availability of a qualified workforce and the overall operating cost, today, companies look for competitive incentive packages, and the availability of LIDA funding can be a deciding factor. Since 2013, the City of Albuquerque has participated in 14 LIDA projects. Eight of those projects were for existing expanding businesses, which five were locally owned. The city's LIDA dollars have been leveraged with state LIDA dollars to help our community be successful in providing economic opportunities for our residents. We understand that separate funds have been proposed for attracting employers to the aviation properties. We applaud that move, and we are always supportive of ways to help make our community more competitive. We appreciate the support the Council has shown in the past. We are here asking that you dedicate no less than $2 million in funding for LIDA in fiscal year 2020 for citywide job creation projects. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Tad Nemenski.
Thank you. My name is Tad Nemenski. What I want to talk today, what we learned from last city council meeting. Last city council meeting, 45 people signed up to speak for quarter billion to support illegal immigration on the American-US and Mexican border. Now, only three states, Council vote, or liberal Democrat vote for, Republicans, three no. Very interesting, isn't it? There was fire marshal in Paso Guatay found a seat. All these recruit by Saint Martin, etc., etc., nonprofits. Episcopal, they recruit Episcopal, people of faith, of course. There were chavas from San Luis Catholic Church, and, and, what is another? Let's see, I have written down. But anyway, was only three who spoke us against. Was very hostile environment. I couldn't get seat back when I came back. And that's what's supposed to be, people of faith. That's what we had these days. They, so anyway, my time running off. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nemenski. Sarah Pierpont, followed by Christopher Ramirez, followed by Daniel Benitz.
Good evening, President Peña, Members of the City Council. My name is Sarah Pierpont. I'm the Executive Director of the New Mexico Recycling Coalition. I'm here tonight to thank the city and the city council for its continued support of recycling despite current market challenges, and to encourage the city council to support and vote for the solid waste enterprise budget tonight. Part of that budget includes a comprehensive effort to reduce contamination of the city's recyclables. Right now, 30% of the items that go in the blue bin that are set out each week to be picked up don't belong there. The city has a 30% contamination rate, and the solid waste department is leading efforts on something that is called a root walk or a cart tagging program. What that means is that solid waste staff will walk the route before the trucks come to pick up the recycling. They'll open the bins, and if they see that a resident has done a really good job, they'll put a tag on that says, "Thank you, you're recycling right." If they open the bin and they see that there is plastic bags, hopefully not as many as there would have been recently, plastic bags or food waste or yard debris, they'll put a tag on it that says, "Oops." It has a picture of a cute little girl hitting her head. It says, "Oops, there's too many something in your bin." And it's really a best practice to authorize the solid waste department to reject service. What that means is if they open a recycling cart, and over 30% of it is garbage, food waste, plastic bags, items that don't belong there, they'll turn that cart and it will not be serviced. They'll leave an explanation so the resident understands why it wasn't serviced, and this authority gives you the highest return on investments. So, if you had a city, and this is done in Massachusetts, side-by-side cities did a similar program. The city that had the authority to decline service for highly contaminated recyclables saw a 45% reduction in their contamination. The city that did not have that authority only saw a 22% reduction in their contamination. So, I implore the city council to give the solid waste department staff the authority they need to decline the service of highly contaminated recyclables. And I have a letter that I'd like to submit that has some more details. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Jones.
Thank you. Interesting presentation. I think it's a great idea. So, first of all, I wouldn't want to be the person who had the job to do the dumpster diving, but, okay, my blue container's full. Do they dig down into it? How do they know? You can't tell just from opening it up, can you?
Their safety is a number one, you know, effort and caution, but they have ways to kind of look, and they have grabbers, they can pick through it, and they use, they train staff so it's all consistent, and so it's a best effort. They don't say dump everything out and look through it, but they might pick through four or five pieces, and they make sure it's standard so everybody is doing the same thing, so it's replicable and fair.
That is a fun idea and very useful. I appreciate that. So, when I get really tired and stop working completely, can I come do that?
Yeah, I think it'd be really fun. You might find some treasures.
That's what I'm thinking. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilor Harris.
Thank you, Madam President. One thing occurs to me, and I saw Sarita just went away, but maybe Stephanie can answer this. I'm not sure we even need an ordinance. Can the administration just do this?
I believe Matthew Whelan's in the audience. I'm not sure.
Okay, our city attorney. Maybe the city attorney, maybe you can do it personally.
Madam President, Councilor Harris, I'm happy to call on Director Whelan to come up and answer that. Thank you.
Madam President and Councilor Harris, this will be something that we'll have to look into to see because it is a rate-based structure if we are allowed to deny service for a week until the contaminants are cleaned up. However, it is something that we are looking into because it is a top priority of the Solid Waste Management Department to reduce our contamination rate and continue recycling as we have in the past.
Okay, so if you need an ordinance, just come to us, I guess.
Councilor Gibson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, I think this is a great idea because we really do want to get rid of contaminants so that we have...
Albuquerque is the leader in the state. Santa Fe and Los Cruces are looking to this city. It's the first time that it'll be done at this level, and so we really appreciate Albuquerque taking the lead.
Right. So, well, I think it's a great idea, but right now, there's only one person driving the truck to pick up the recyclable.
It's a different staff. It's often summer interns and not the same staff that'd be picking up the trash. So, what they do is for safety, they make sure that they're well ahead of that truck, and it's a team that goes out ahead of time. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. So, our next speaker is Christopher Ramirez, followed by Daniel Benitz, followed by Christopher Baca.
Good evening, buenas noches. My name is Council President and Councilors, my name is Christopher Ramirez. I live in the International District, and I work with a group called Together for Brothers. We've been working on a health impact assessment since 2017 to look at transit equity, and we're here tonight to speak in favor of the city's budget that includes $1 million for youth and senior programming, including the summer bus pass. Last summer was the first time the City of Albuquerque offered a free bus pass for young people, and we've expanded, we've doubled that number in this, with the allocation that you'll approve tonight to 3,000. And that also includes expanding the bus pass from nine-year-olds to 25-year-olds in the City of Albuquerque. And that 100-day bus pass will mean that young people, especially in the most transit-dependent neighborhoods of the West Side and International District, will have access to some of the healthy recreation opportunities that Dr. Patel and others were talking about with the Complete Streets program. So, there's a strong connection. But one of the questions that we want to ask the Council and the mayor is what happens on day 101? The summer bus passes go for 100 days, but for young people that we know are dependent on the city's public transit system but can't afford the bus pass, they're still going to be stuck in a situation come September that they're not going to have a way to pay for the bus. We're hoping that the city, the Transit Department, City Council, and also APS and the county can come together and look at an arrangement similar to UNM and CNM where APS could pay a flat rate for all students in Albuquerque public schools to be able to have access to public transportation. Thank you for your time.
Councilor Davis.
Thanks so much, Mr. Ramirez. I'm really grateful for y'all to be here. I see some of the young men here with us tonight, Xavier, other folks that are here with us, and I appreciate that. As we know, at ABCGC, you all presented with us and to the Transit Advisory Board about that process, and we've been working on that. And so, we're grateful that the administration's expanding the summer bus pass program, and that bought us a little more time to get through the summer and work with you all to evaluate the fiscal ability to do that. I think we've made some real progress, as you know, with APS. I want to acknowledge that it was the work of Together for Brothers last year that really helped us get some of the data from students at Highland High School, for example, and using these bus passes that demonstrated that actually, for the first time in a number of years, our ridership increased over the summer when we made ridership available to young people through these bus passes, and that's helping us achieve our ridership goals. And so, I appreciate the work that your young men did to organize for that, and I look forward to working with you on it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Daniel. I'm not even going to say your last name, Daniel.
Hello, my name is Daniel Benitez Deluna. I live in the South Valley, but I'm here representing Together for Brothers. I attend school in the West Gate District, and in my time that I've spent over there, I noticed that there's nearly no accessible and convenient bus stops or bus routes that are along some of the main streets. So, I'm here to ask if you could possibly include that in next year's budget, as well as support what Christopher Ramirez has said. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll just add to that. That's a concern of not only mine, but Commissioner Casada from the county, is that we have talked to transit about adding additional routes. As you stated, you know, it has to be a collaboration between the city and county, and we're looking at one in particular, and that's Down Bridge all the way to CNM. And it's a costly process, but we're working on it, so.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Christopher Baca, followed by Armin Iwanis. I can't tell whether it's a P or a D, so I'm going to say Pana. Pana.
Hello, Madam President and fellow Council Members. My name is Christopher Baca. I am a youth organizer with Together for Brothers. I live in the West Gate area, H7121, and I'm here to give my story of self, to speak about the opportunities that have been presented to me and how that has led to a healthy lifestyle and relationship to being able to have transit. Because I live in the West Gate area, one of the most transit-dependent areas in the City of Albuquerque, I had the privilege to purchase a vehicle because the bus system in that area did not meet my needs. With a vehicle, I was able to participate in a competitive soccer league, being able to take state, my state championship with club two years in a row. And I would like this opportunity to be shared with the rest of the youth in my West Gate area as we love soccer, and being able to access recreation, access employment, access healthy opportunities is going to help improve Albuquerque and lead Albuquerque to a more youth-friendly city. So, I ask you to please support in collaboration after day 101 for the bus routes and the bus passes. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Pana, followed by Omar Torres, followed by Colleen Gorman.
Hello, my name is Armon Pana, and I live in District 4 and attend La Cueva High School. And I'm here to get support for the bus passes because I have family and friends that weren't born here, and they're immigrants, and they don't have the privilege that we had, which is have a mode of transportation wherever we needed to go. And I just wanted to get support for the free bus passes because they need the opportunities that we had, like free transportation to school and work and extracurricular activities that they want to do. And I just wanted to, that's it.
Thank you. Our next speaker is, was it Mr. Torres is next? Is that correct? And as you're making your way up here, I just want to also add to that is that APS has, I have met with some leadership from APS, and they're definitely very interested in partnering with the city to try to get passes for students to ride the bus rather than to get on the public school transportation. It would save money, I think, in both ways. So, Mr. Torres.
Hi, everybody, Council and audience. My name is Omar Torres, and I also live in the West Gate area. Growing up, right now, I have the privilege of owning a car, but growing up, I had to take the bus a lot of places in the city. And I know that I was privileged enough to afford the bus, but I know that a lot of my brothers and sisters right now, who are young, don't always have the money for the bus. And so, I'm also working with Together for Brothers and in support of, hoping that y'all look at the budget, and again, collaboration, and that it's important to work with the county and APS to make sure that we can work through this, to make sure that for fiscal year 2020, all youth can ride the bus for free, right 18 and under. I'm just going to echo what Christopher said. What happens on day 101, right? After 100 days of being able to ride the bus for free, that's great, but what happens on day 101? So, yeah, please support the route to getting everybody on the bus. Thank you.
Thank you. Colleen Gorman, followed by Caleb Haswood, followed by Xavier Barrasa.
Good evening, Madam President and Counselors. Thank you for all the work that you guys do. I appreciate that in making the city run and be a better place. I'm here as the Executive Director of quote-unquote, but also as a member of the public. And I, sorry, I've been taking a look at the new cable franchise agreement. I think it's interesting that educational programming is number one on the list of types of programming that will be provided by Comcast. Arts, culture, and performance arts is number six. Foreign language is seven. Eight is science and documentaries, and 10 is public access. Quote-unquote, we'll be operating the Educational Access Channel, and I don't believe that there's any specific definition of education, but I believe it does include all of that. There's a point G that talks about services for the disabled, which is really important. And I think that your spokesperson left, but the public access station operator, the pass since 2012, I don't believe has been accessible to the disabled community, and I just want to support that whatever comes up, that the people with disabilities are supported with regard... with regards to being able to access public access. And I would say, the last thing, oh God, I wanted to say, my thing went away here, is on the cable franchise agreement with regards to what I'm trying to do as the leadership role for quote-unquote, I'll try and hurry up this, community access media pods. That's what I want to do. I want to start community access media pods so that educational institutions, nonprofits, tribes can actually be able to push content into the head end so that they can deliver their educational content, support language and cultural preservation and revitalization for Indigenous media network, but also for, again, for many people in the communities. So I'll try and provide more information, maybe in the form of a brochure or pamphlet later on to this.
Thank you.
But I just want to let you know, Senate Bill 589 has been introduced, and I'm going to prefile it in December. And that is a million dollars operating funding tied to it every year. And I would like to support developing and expanding community media statewide, and I hope the City Council supports that.
Thank you, Ms. Gorman. Caleb Haswood, followed by Xavier Barasa, followed by Art Tannenbaum.
Good evening, councilors and Madam President. Yatay Dolly Chin, Dana, Kayla Haswood, Yonisha. Hello, my name is Kayla. I am 16-years-old. I support free bus passes for youth from 8 to 18. I'm an urban native living in Albuquerque. I walked here today, but today I'd like to share a story of my native brother. He had trouble with bus access from getting to school and back home. He also had trouble with getting around the city of Albuquerque, like hospitals, grocery stores, et cetera. I heard that this is called One Albuquerque, and if this is true, one young person should be, should not be left behind by our transit systems.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Our next speaker is Xavier Barasa, followed by Art Tannenbaum, followed by Jesus Campos, and then our final speaker will be Arlene Lovec.
My name is Xavier Barasa. I'm a co-founder, program coordinator with Together for Brothers. Trying to lighten the mood, these spaces and places like this, right, where the halls of power are, it can be really hard to navigate, especially for a young person. So sorry for turning my back to you, councilors and to Madam President. Here to support bus passes, you already heard the spiel, you already heard the stories, super important. Other cities are doing it. It makes huge impact to health, financial, entrepreneurship, you name it. Access to transit is a huge deal, and it impacts our hearts, minds, and feet. So that's how we would like to talk about. Public access was a really important topic. Thank you, Esteban. Nice to see you again. It's important to think about public access and about whether we're checking on a lot of the resources that are coming, especially for public access TV. There's an interesting track record with individuals who have currently coordinated public access, so we should check that out. I encourage all folks to check it out, not just folks who have to, based on their duties and responsibilities. Transit equity is a big deal. I want to congratulate, spend my time to congratulate these young men who come up and show up because it takes a lot to stand up here. So that's really why I'm here. The spiel's there. Everything's good. Is that for me? Thank you, sir. And I appreciate you all. Y'all are awesome. Hope you all lighten your mood and have a good time and take care of your hearts. You know what I mean? I just, I see, I see you all and I care. I think a lot of us, like a lot of the young men, one of the things we talk about is we want our representatives to take care of themselves. We want them to feel good when you're up here. Let this, you know, I was thinking like this maybe should be in early morning. Let's take quotes by Jeff Bezos, right? Jeff Bezos doesn't do anything after 12. That's heavy on the mind. Maybe we do that. I don't know. But the thing is, is like, take care of yourselves. All these young men, even when they push things that may not be with an agenda or along your financial stuff or around your financial matters, they care about you as people, and I think that's something that they don't get to say, but I'll say it for them. So you're cared for, and so rock it out, all y'all too.
Thank you, Mr. Barasa. Next speaker is Art Tannenbaum, followed by Jesus Campos.
Unruly and disorderly public servants. I think I've discovered a city department that's worse than transit. I know that's a horrifying thought. So I've been hearing a lot lately that the city's public safety resources are incredibly drained. And I'm wondering, incredibly drained by what? The council put through a $60-million tax increase a year ago. So our resources are incredibly drained by what? Establishment insiders exploiting the system egregiously? You know, it's just a month ago, the latest chief's overtime scandal erupted. And Sean Willoughby was going on in the newspaper about what Albuquerque police officers want to do and don't want to do. That just blew my mind. I'm like, wow, do Albuquerque police officers just do what they want? Now we got the Albuquerque Fire Rescue. And this claim that the resources are incredibly drained. Anyway, a couple of weeks ago, there was a story on Eyewitness News 4 about some baby ducks that were rescued by a couple of Albuquerque Police Department officers. There was photographs and Twitter tweet. Just last week, AFR rescued some baby ducks. Both of these incidents took place in the northwest part of the city. And I'm wondering, wow, why, why, I thought our public, I thought our public safety resources were incredibly drained. So, you know, I think about, well, the official photographs coming from the political establishment and the story, the story about how our public safety personnel are rescuing ducklings. And I'm thinking about a public servant who has a job title of like Communications Director, sitting around twirling his mustache and putting out this story and draining public resources.
Thank you, Mr. Tannenbaum. Our next speaker is Jesus Campos. And our final speaker will be Arlene Lovec.
Good evening, City Council members. My name is Jesus Campos. I am a junior, soon to be senior at Technology Leadership High School. And I will be giving my story of self and also echoing what the amazing group of Together for Brothers has been saying. Having to go, having to go to school on the other side of the city basically sucks. Transportation for me, while living in the South Valley and Westgate area, has always been a struggle. And being, being late to school, no matter how early you wake up, is a bad feeling. Something that's a struggle for me. And also having to deal with the choice of going and not going to school. And another struggle for me, but not only for the peoples of the South Valley and Westgate area, is no bus help, such as a few bus routes and low frequency. We deserve the right to have bus transit so we can do things like go to work, go to after-school activities, and go to sports practices that can lead, that can help us lower the violence rate. So thank you guys for your time, and have a good night.
Thank you. Our final speaker is Arlene Lovec.
Hi, my name is Arlene Lovec. So I wanted to come up here to address an issue I have seen before, actually two issues. So the first one is homeless people. So homeless people, they're, are in traffic lanes, which I've seen them in traffic lanes, which is dangerous for both the homeless person and the driver. I've seen them in parks. I've seen them on private property. They leave trash everywhere. So, and authorities rarely evict homeless people, which, they have homeless shelters and they're not using them at all. So kids often, they don't feel safe playing at parks or in the playgrounds because there might be like homeless people just like 20 feet away. So the second issue I was addressing is crime. So crime and homeless issues are causing young people in Albuquerque to grow up here and then leave because there's so much crime, so many homeless people, that they don't want to be here anymore. These issues, they are affecting the future of Albuquerque. And they're also affecting the safety of the streets. People might not feel safe just walking down the street or running because they feel like they might be attacked because of all the crime issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for being here this evening. Counselors, we have one more rule suspension motion that is needed this evening for a grant to be adopted. I move that the rules be suspended for the purpose of pulling R 148 out of the Finance and Government Operations Committee and placing it on tonight's agenda for final action. R 148 is approving and authorizing the acceptance of grant funds from the WK Calog Foundation and providing an appropriation to the Legal Department for fiscal years 2019 through 2021. Is there a second? There's a motion in second. All those in favor say yes. Oppose, no. Motion passes. Item AA on the consent agenda, 148, approving and authorizing the acceptance of grant funds from the W Calog Foundation and providing an appropriation to the Legal Department for fiscal years 2019 through 2021. Am I doing it double? So I'm good? Keep going. So I move a due pass? So there's a motion in second. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Oppose, no. Motion passes. So, thank you. We are now on announcements, item 11. Counselor Davis.
Thank you, Madam President. There will be an Albuquerque-Bernaleo County Government Commission meeting this Thursday at 5:00 PM in these chambers.
The following Public Improvement District's Board of Directors will meet on Tuesday, May 21st, in the Council Committee Room on the ninth floor. The Salteo at 10:30 AM, the Trails at 11:30 AM, Mesa del Sol at 1:00 PM. The following Public Improvement District Board of Directors will have a special meeting on Wednesday, May 29th, in the Council Committee Room on the ninth floor. Montecito Estates at 10:00 AM, Voltera at 10:45 AM, Wantable Hills Estates at 11:30, Boulders at 2:00 PM, Lower Petrocliffs at 3:00 PM. We are now on item 12, public hearings. AC 19-5, the University Heights Association appeals the decision of the Environmental Planning Commission. Mr. Melendez, can you help to explain this?
Thank you, Madam President, members of the council. The issue in this appeal is whether a zone map amendment from RML to MXT should be affirmed where the ZMA is adjacent to the Central Avenue Main Street corridor along a major collector street and with an area that the EPC found to be already mixed use in character. The EPC approved the ZMA, finding that it advances further multiple policies of the comprehensive plan and is overall more advantageous to that area as articulated by those policies. The University Heights Neighborhood Association appealed that decision. The council referred it to its land use hearing officer who recommends that the appeal be denied and that the EPC's approval of the ZMA be approved. The subject site is approximately .2 acres in size. If the MXT zoning is ultimately approved, the applicant intends to establish a wellness center on the bottom floor of what is presently a multifamily structure. The EPC did approve that based on several findings. But on appeal, the appellant asserts that the ZMA should not have been approved because of a setback issue on the property, because it was not adequately analyzed as being within an area of consistency, because of existing parking problems in the neighborhood, and because it could exacerbate vehicular conflicts on the Silver Avenue Bicycle Boulevard. However, upon evaluating those issues, the land use hearing officer ultimately determined that there is a building nonconformance on the site, but it's a lawful nonconformance relative to the building, and the change in use does not have any impact on that, so it's not particularly relevant to the change in use. In addition, that the EPC was justified in determining that the mixed-use zoning is consistent with that area, which otherwise appears to be mixed use in nature, that the proposed ZMA does not appear to exacerbate existing parking problems in the area, and finally, that mixed-use zoning will actually help facilitate the goals of the Silver Avenue Bicycle Boulevard at that location. Again, the land use hearing officer is recommending that the appeal be denied and that the zone map amendment be approved. The council has options to accept that recommendation and the findings of the land use hearing officer. If you decline to accept the findings and recommendation, we can schedule this matter for a full hearing at a subsequent date.
Counselor Gibson.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm going to move that we accept Luhoe and the findings.
So there's a motion in the second to accept the land use hearing officer's recommendations and findings. All those in, oh, any questions? Counselor Benton, sorry.
Thank you, Madam President. Just quickly, Chris, one of the key arguments by the appellant was that this is within an area of consistency. Could you speak to that? And, I mean, I am familiar with the location of the property, which does seem to be mixed, but.
Thank you, Madam President. Counselor Benton, per the comprehensive plan, an area inconsistency is an area designated as where the community and the city would not expect significant land use changes. And any land use changes or zoning changes should be consistent with the character of the existing area. In this particular instance, the EPC evaluated the character of the area, and the record indicates that the established character of the area is actually mixed use and transitional. The proposed ZMA is adjacent to the Central Avenue Main Street corridor. It's on a major collector street. And there are a number of mixed-use uses in the immediate area, including offices, residential uses, and larger commercial uses nearby. That was the EPC's evaluation of the area of consistency and whether or not this type of zoning would be consistent with an area of consistency. And based on that, those facts and that analysis has determined that it would.
Thank you. Madam Chair, if I may follow up. The other kind of key point, I think, had to do with parking and the potential impact on parking. Currently, it was, it's seven dwelling units, I believe, in the building. This would replace two of those with some type of commercial activity, a salon or something, I believe, as I recall. Or health provider, excuse me. And was there specific analysis done on that compared to just continuation of its use as a, as a residential?
Madam President, Counselor Benton, parking was an issue discussed, and the record indicates that the planning staff and the EPC appeared to believe that it was sort of a status quo outcome with respect to parking. There's some recognition in the record that there are general parking issues and concerns throughout that area near the university, but that this particular zone map amendment wouldn't exacerbate those problems. The record suggests that, and I think correctly, that to the extent a particular use within that building that was more mixed use, more commercial, more office than residential, to the extent that that happened, that particular use would be limited by the parking requirement. So for example, if the use of the floor area changed to something that required 10 spaces, but only five could be accommodated on-site, then that would be a limiting factor. This particular site, because of its proximity to multimodal transport, would get parking reduction credits. And so that would enable it, as any other property with that benefit, to be able to reduce the number of overall parking. But ultimately, there's a recognition that there are parking issues and concerns in that area, but it's not anticipated that this will make them any better or any worse.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Any other questions? So with that, there was a motion in the second to accept the land use hearing officer's recommendations and findings. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Oppose, no? No. So. So that was seven-two with Counselor Davis and myself in opposition. And Counselor Sanchez in the affirmative, so. Okay, so now we are on item 13, approvals. EC 402, approval of the second supplemental agreement to add home funding to the PY 2018 Anka Street Development Agreement with Greater Albuquerque Housing Partnership. Anka Street Development Agreement with Greater Albuquerque Housing Partnership. I move approval. There's a motion in second for approval. Is there anyone signed up to speak? No? Any questions, administration? Okay. There's a motion in second for approval of EC 402. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no. Motion passes. Next item is EC 406, approval of outside counsel for legal services agreement with Lennon Associates LLC. I move approval. Anyone signed up to speak? Questions? So there's a motion in second for approval. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no. Motion passes. We are now on item four... No. Next item is, item 14, final actions. Counselor Jones.
Thank you, Madam President. This is R 150, adopting interim procedures for the Development Review Board until the first annual update to the Integrated Development Ordinance has been completed. I move a due pass.
There's a motion in second for a due pass of R 150. Counselor Jones, any questions?
If there are any questions, Mr. Melendez has every answer we could ever want. If not, I'm...
Seeing none, and we don't have anyone signed up to speak. There's a motion in the second for R 150. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no. Opposed, no. Motion passes. Counselor Jones, R 138.
Thank you, Madam President. This is appropriating funds for operating the government of the City of Albuquerque for fiscal year 2020, beginning July 1st, 2019, and ending June 30th, 2020, adjusting fiscal year 2019 appropriations and appropriating capital funds. I move a due pass.
There's a motion in second for a due pass of R 138. We actually have someone signed up to speak. It is Mr. Barry Bitzer.
Madam Chair, Madam President, members of the council. My name is Barry Bitzer. I'm with the New Mexico Biopark Society. The biopark attracts over 1.3 million paid visitors each year, making it the state's most visited attraction. Another 200,000 use Tingly Beach, and over half of Albuquerque considers the biopark the city's top attraction. The biopark's reputation and its AZA, which is Association of Zoos and Aquariums, its accreditation rely on the, the health and well-being of the animals. Surveys conducted in 2015 indicate that animal care and quality of life is the public's number-one concern regarding the biopark. The park has relied on two veterinarians since the days when it was just a zoo. As it has grown to include the aquarium, Botanic Garden, Heritage Farm, and Tingly Beach, the workload has grown significantly, but the vet staff has not. The biopark is now home to over 13,000 animals. The biopark's vets must care for every animal, large and small. Sharks, sea turtles, eels, and other marine life require the same lifesaving care that the zoo's elephants, lions, polar bears, and primates need. The vets are also called upon to address issues with wildlife at Tingly Beach. When shorthanded, the biopark must rely on a veterinarian contractor who does not have the same knowledge of the facility or regular contact with staff and animals. We want to express our thanks and appreciation for the two additional keepers, the proposed budget. Every animal deserves the highest level of care. By also funding a third vet position, you will help ensure that every animal at the biopark receives proper care and that we don't lose quality vets to burnout and that we get the, the highest marks during reaccreditation. Since the facility is due for reaccreditation review in 2020, we believe now is the right time. Thank you.
Thank you. So that's our final speaker. So I move that the rules be suspended for the purpose of considering a floor substitute for R 138 this evening. There's a motion in second. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no. Motion passes. So I'll move a floor substitute, R 138. You have your copies on the dais. So is there a second? There's a motion in second to move floor substitute, R 138. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no. Motion passes. So now we have some amendments, and Counselor Borrego, I think you made a decision not to, to move a couple of them forward. I have one A.
A is we have to be talking to the floor of council.
So item number C will be floor amendment number one. Counselor Borrego.
Yes, and actually, this amendment is sponsored by myself and Counselor Benton.
Your mic.
This amendment, number C, which I guess now is number one, is sponsored by myself and Counselor Benton, and what it reads on page two, line 19, entitled "Council Services: Increase the Amount by $30,000." This amendment appropriates $30,000 from available fund balance in the General Fund to Council Services Department for costs related to an internship partnership program, which already exists with the city, for, with the School of Public Administration.
There's a motion in the second for, for floor amendment number one. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no.
Yes.
Motion passes. We are now on amendment, which is labeled D, which would be floor amendment number two. Counselor Benton.
Thank you, Madam President. I'll move floor amendment number two.
There's a motion in second for floor amendment number two.
And, Madam President, this reads on page two, line 23, entitled "Community Events: Increase the Amount by $20,000." And the explanation is this amendment appropriates an additional $20,000 to the Downtown Arts and Cultural District from available fund balance. This would bring the total allocation to the Arts and Cultural Districts to 40,000. Downtown Arts and Cultural District is a designated area of 30 blocks in downtown Albuquerque and is an initiative of the Downtown ABQ Main Street, and the district supports the creative economy of downtown through promotional support, funding, and scholarships. And this Arts and Cultural District is really taking off. We've got some great theater downtown. We've got some great galleries, and this will allow them to increase their promotion throughout the city.
There's a motion in the second for floor amendment number one. All those in favor say yes? Oh, two. I'm sorry, two. All those, all those in favor say yes? Opposed, no. Motion passes. We are now on floor amendment number three, which is labeled E. This is Counselor Jones and Sanchez.
Thank you. Yes, this is Counselor Sanchez also. On page two, line 21, entitled "Biological Park: Increase the Amount by $127,000." On page five, line nine, entitled "Park's Management: Decrease the Amount by $106,000." This amendment proposes to delete two park maintenance worker, three positions, that have been vacant for two years, and appropriates the funding to add one veterinarian position for the biopark. The addition of this position would allow the biopark to continue to grow its exhibit space while providing adequate animal welfare set forth by the AZA. A citation was received during AZA accreditation process in 2015 that detailed concerns over the veterinary involvement at our aquarium. This citation, as well as the biopark's master plan calling for construction of new exhibit space, justify the hiring of additional full-time veterinarian. I urge your support.
There's a motion in the second. Was there a second on that? Yeah? Motion in the second for floor amendment number three. Counselor Benton.
Thank you, Madam President. I was wanting to hear from Parks Department about these workers and, and these two positions, if I could, and/or the administration, but...
Thank you, Counsel President Peña, Counselor Benton. I'll invite Dave Simon to come down and respond to the question, but I wanted to point out that although these positions have been vacant, the intent is to use some of these park maintenance workers as part of the SHARP program to address the needle issue in the park that you heard some of our speakers, including the, the invoice scout, speak about today. So we would ask that we would preserve these positions, and we also have cultural services here if you'd like to hear more about the request for the veterinarian.
Madam President, if I could, Director, Director Simon, appreciate the clarification by Ms. Nahir about the SHARP's program. Just kind of a sense of why we, we haven't been able to fill these positions in the past?
Sure. Madam President, Counselor Benton, really, sometimes while these positions look like they're vacant, they're vacant because people move automatically up into those positions. When they achieve a certain job training classification through, we have a very thorough job training classification system, so in order for that to work for our blue-collar employees, they complete their trainings, and then they're automatically upgraded to some of these positions. So frequently, they show vacancies, but they show those continually so we can have an effective promotion program for our blue-collar workers.
And, and Madam President, and Director Simon, I, I do appreciate the severity of the issue with, with needles in the park. We've got them everywhere. We've got them in the county, in the Little Lake fields, and you name it. So as a community, we've got to pull together to, to get this done, but I think as a city, you know, that's a pretty important potential for us to pitch in as a city. How long do you think it would take to fill these positions, or do you have an idea?
Well, Madam President, Counselor, again, they're, they're routinely filled. For example, when a, a worker achieves their CDL or Commercial Driver's License certificate, they would be upgraded automatically into these positions. So it's happening continually, so they frequently look like they're vacancies, but it's a churn in our blue-collar job classification training program that often shows these as vacancies. So, you know, getting CDLs is a, is one of the reasons that people move up, and I will say that's, you know, it's more of a challenge to get our employees to take and pass the CDL class, but we do need those workers very much in city government.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you.
Counselor Davis.
Thank you, Madam President. Director Sanchez, if you don't mind, I wanted to follow up. Dr. Sanchez, I'm excited to go to the zoo tomorrow, and thank you very much for your help. We're taking students from Hawthorne Elementary School who did an entire year of perfect attendance at the school, and we're going to go give them a special treat on the last week of school, and thanks to your help, and we appreciate that. So we'll see our vets tomorrow, too, I think. I wanted to ask, sort of, what is the status? Let me back up. As Counselor Jones mentioned, we've been getting right with AZA for a number of years. What is our current status in terms of certifications, and what is the current, what does the biopark see as the current need or workload, say, over the next year as we bring on more exhibits? Is this something the biopark needs now? Is it a mid-year position? Is it something to consider in our next budget? What's, what's your professional recommendation?
Madam President, Counselor Davis, where we are in AZA accreditation is we are about to go up for accreditation, so we kind of start that process this year. We're preparing, and then really, the accreditation, the reaccreditation process officially begins next year. Honestly, we're always in the accreditation process because it's not just a milestone that we check off. We're constantly kind of complying and making sure that we're doing everything we need to do all the time, and then getting better as we go. Specifically, when it comes to veterinary services, that was one of the issue papers, but it was not one of our highest priorities. We rely heavily on contract services for veterinarians, and at this point, we do have adequate care for our animals. We have two full-time veterinarians, and we have a pretty significant amount of contract veterinarians throughout the year. So, yes, as we grow, we definitely need to plan for that. It is not one of our highest priorities, and we, we feel really good that we have the two keepers in this budget, and that's definitely a priority.
Thank you. Thank you, Director, and I appreciate that, Madam President. I, I think this is a good idea. We've talked through this a good deal and, and talked about it in our last budget as well. I'd be supportive of us adding a budget objective to evaluate sort of the workload on our veterinarians and that sort of strategic plan for healthcare as part of the re-accreditation. But I know we are trying to fulfill our SHARP's program. We're trying to catch up on that. I know that's been a priority for the city, and if we look at our indicators progress reports, certainly, our city has told us, and our residents have told us, that that's been a priority. I think we could continue to supplement contract with additional funds as we need them. If we did, I, at this point, I think I would prefer to keep those positions available for parks for that program. Thank you.
Counselor Gibson.
Thank you, Madam President. Just one more question for you, Director. So I want to make sure I understood what you said. Since 2015, have, has the zoo hired yet another, a second veterinary, veterinarian?
Madam President, Counselor Gibson, I would have to say I'm not exactly sure when the second veterinarian was hired, since I've only been here since 2018.
Right.
But at this point, right now, we have two full-time vet positions and additional contract vet services.
Okay. I understand. So I guess what I'm wondering is if we have made an improvement, made a positive action since the, the finding or the citation in 2015? And if you don't know, I understand.
Yeah.
I don't know either.
Counselor Gibson, I'm, I'm honestly not exactly sure what the difference is between 2015 and 2015 and now in terms of our services.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Harris.
Thank you. So we're still on the amendment from Counselor Jones and Sanchez? Okay. So maybe ask the administration. It sounds like that the administration supports the objective of Counselor Jones, just not the mechanism getting there. Is that kind of what I'm hearing?
Counsel President Peña, Counselor Harris, we believe that we should have the highest level of veterinary care at the biopark. We believe we are also achieving that through the current program, and we are happy to take a look at that over the course of the next year. Also want to point out that there are already parks' maintenance positions being deleted per the floor substitute, so this would take that from, I believe, two to four. And then also wanted to invite Director Sanchez to clarify her answer, because I don't think she actually answered your question, Counselor Gibson.
So, Counselor Gibson, I believe that, that you were asking about the citation that was issued in 2015, the last time we went through that. All concerns and, and all citations, including veterinary services, have been addressed over the last three and a half years at AZA. We are in good standing with AZA, and we have every reason to believe that we will be at the end of the next accreditation cycle.
If I may, Madam...
Counselor Gibson.
President. So I'm glad that they've been answered and satisfied, but we just don't know if that was by creating another position and bringing on another vet at this, at this point. That's what we're still not really sure about, and I get it.
Yeah. Madam President, Counselor Gibson, you know, I would have to go back and look exactly, but I do know that, that over the past three years, all of the citations and concerns have been addressed. I feel like we're in very good standing with AZA, and there are no major concerns as we enter accreditation, except for maintaining, maintaining budget, maintaining positions, and moving forward.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Benton.
Thank you, Madam President. And just, and, yes, thank you, Director Sanchez. You don't have to stand there. Yeah, I just wanted to appreciate the suggestion of Counselor Davis and, and remind us all with regard to this and any budget that the objectives are important. Sometimes we forget that we pass objectives. We passed a very important objective last year that moved ball forward to some extent on equity in, in some of our projects and programs and, and looking at the areas of most need. And in this case, I think the, the aspirations of hiring and filling existing vacancies are important for us to weigh in on as well. So I hope that, that all the counselors will take advantage of that opportunity to put forth budget objectives for going forward, including this one. But there are some other things that have fallen out during the process, the natural process of trying to hash out a budget, and, and I certainly intend to address those as well, because I, I support other hirings and promotion of positions within government to make us work better. So thank you for that, mentioning that, Counselor Davis.
Counselor Jones.
Thank you, Madam President. First, I need to ask if Counselor Sanchez would like to say anything in slow motion?
Counselor Sanchez.
I am having a difficult time hearing some of the discussion. I'm not sure if you can hear me.
We can hear you clearly.
Yeah, because I can barely hear the conversation and the debate. I tried to get on the, on the CABQ channel, but could not get on. I guess there was, there were some difficulties.
Well, in that case, Counselor, if you don't mind, I will speak for us. We have heard at the council for the need of another veterinarian at the zoo. We've heard it from the people who have the boots on the ground, which I think is always a good place to listen to this kind of thing, because they have to work with it daily. a good place to listen to this kind of thing, because they have to work with it daily. I understand that we have many vacancies for more than two years in the City of Albuquerque workforce, so I can only say I would hope that the administration would take a better look at that. It is rather difficult for us to fund those positions as they show up and the way they read consecutively as vacant positions. When we then fund them, we make allowances for them when we could be using the money for things that we need today. And that's why this was addressed, because we were told, the city council was told by the people who work in the trenches there, that they needed another veterinarian. So I'm not going to question your statement that we don't need one, but I am going to question your statement that we need to deal with these positions that are, in fact, vacant for two years or longer without being filled. I think that's money that's sitting someplace that needs to be used for the areas that we need to be done. So I am confident this will not pass, but I'm still going to say we need to address that each and every time we come before the city council people with a budget. So I would ask your approval.
Thank you, Counselor Jones. So we have a motion and a second for floor amendment number three. That's correct. All those in favor say yes, and raise your hand.
Yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no?
Mr. Peña, I'm raising my hand. No?
So are you saying yes, or?
I'm saying no.
No. So did you get the tally? All those in favor, raise your hand and say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no? And raise your hand.
No.
That fails. So it looks like, were we just handed another amendment?
Yeah.
This is floor amendment, this would be actually floor amendment number three, since the other one failed. Counselor Davis.
Madam President, I believe it would be number four, since we had to have a recorded vote of number three. Is that right? Okay.
Oh, you would?
Yes, ma'am. Sorry. Madam President, this is floor amendment number four. I'm going to ask Ms. Yar to help me explain this just a little bit. This is just a text amendment, and our apologies, it was not on the day, it's at five o'clock, and so it will require a vote to suspend the rules. However, this is a text amendment on the Central Avenue bicycling program. It was carried, included in the original committee sub, and I know it was sponsored by a number of counselors up along Central in the ART corridor. It was inadvertently left out in the transfer to this new committee sub or floor sub, and so it's simply a text amendment to do that. With the president's permission, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules to allow the introduction of floor amendment number four.
There's a motion and a second for floor amendment number four. I mean, to suspend the rules, I'm sorry, to allow for floor amendment number four. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no?
Yes.
Motion passes. Counselor Davis.
Thank you, Madam President. Since this is a new amendment, I'm going to just read it into the record. It's very short. Floor amendment number four, on page five, after line 27, insert the following. Eight of the additional police officer positions funded for FY '20 shall be designated for the Rediscover Route 66 Central Avenue Community Policing Initiative. By way of explanation, this amendment designates that of the funding for the 53 new police officer positions requested, and I assume to be funded by this council, eight of these are designated for the Community Policing Initiative, supporting growth of small business along the corridor impacted by ART from 98th to Uptown.
Counselor Winter, followed by Counselor Harris.
Thank you, Madam President, and I wonder if we have someone from APD to discuss this amendment.
Counsel President Peña, Counselor Winter, yes, we have Chief of Staff John Ross making his way down to the podium. In general, I would add that we are supportive of this, although we never like to curtail the chief's ability to put police officers wherever they're needed. This is consistent with our plans for those areas.
Thank you, Madam President. I've got a couple of questions. So it looked like in the new budget, we have a total of 53 officers, and I know that we're somewhere around 400 officers at this time, and I think we've been stuck at 400 and some for a long time. We do have some lateral classes coming and some other classes, and I'm not sure when they're going to be put on the streets. But the problem that I have, so we have 53, and I know that we've got a problem on Central and a big problem, and we're trying to fight this, but are we sacrificing the rest of the city for Central? It's like up in the Northeast Heights, we still have our own issues. A lot of them are equality of life issues that can't get a response. And so I'm just kind of curious when the rest of these officers are going to come about and when the new officers are going to come, and how they're going to be dispersed around the city.
Madam President, Peña, Counselor Winter, when the, we'll go to the 53, adding the, so it'll be 1,053 officers, and the new 100 that we are speaking of, we're looking at 80 of the 100 to go out to field services. 20 is to help in specialized services, it's homicide, crimes against children unit. Out of all those, we've talked about earlier about the community policing, we implore all of our officers to engage in the community policing effort and community outreach effort. Those efforts along the Central Corridor are very important to the city and to the Police Department, as well as any other area in the city. So what we will do is look at the resources at the time. We have PRT teams, response teams, and we will redirect or the chief will assign as needed. I hope that helps you out a little bit.
Counselor Winter.
Madam President, well, you didn't really answer my question. The fact is, what are we looking at for the Northeast substation? How many more officers in the next six months are we looking at to be assigned up there? New officers?
The numbers to the specific area command has not been put into play yet. The 80 that we're talking about to the field will be divided into each area command and divided to where the priority of the calls for service are. Commander Joe Burke is also in the chambers here tonight of the Northeast Area Command. He will, as he already has, submitted a number that he would like to see in the Northeast, but each area command is not designated at this point.
How about on Central? Is it designated?
We just, we just designated 80 to the field of the new 100 that we're discussing, and as the deployments come across, as initiatives come across, in six months, there may be a different area of Central Avenue, but they'll be into each area command and the downtown district, which is a newly created district as well.
Thank you. Madam President, one more question. So how many officers do we have? Not new officers, not officers in any other, how many new officers on the street do we have right now? How many officers on the street are we, do we have of this time?
600. We have 600 uniformed officers taking calls for service.
And do you have those broken down by different quadrants of the city on how many we have?
We do, but I don't have that with me.
No, and I don't expect you to, but I would appreciate to have those numbers, if someone could send them to me.
Absolutely.
Thank you, sir.
Counselor Harris.
Thank you. And before I ask my other questions, sort of broader perspective, what is the total number of sworn officers we have with the new class that just got sworn in? I guess we got a new class recently, right?
Yes, we have a class that actually Thursday, they will get sworn in, but they have additional training through APD, use of force, cost-related activities. We had 955. There's a class of 20, that's 975. And we have, we're seated seven laterals, 982 is what that number is, and then we have another academy of about 50 that's going to start in the summertime-ish.
Okay, so if the 50 comes, when will they be done?
Not until, probably closer to the end of the year, next fiscal year.
So sometime in 2020, we could be over 1,000? Is that?
Yes, we plan to be at 1,053 by the end of next fiscal year.
By the end of next fiscal year, which is June 30th of 2020?
Yes.
Okay. That still is, that's about 200 more than we, so that's a pretty good climb. We still have a ways to go, but thanks for that. And now, one of the things that Counselor Davis and I chatted about a little bit is that, and also Counselor Peña and Davis and rather Counselor Sanchez, just make sure that when talking about Route 66, we're talking about tramway to 98th Street, because that's all Route 66. And, you know, I think Counselor Davis is saying maybe we should have 10, or maybe eight is enough. I don't know. And I'm just sort of open for sort of a free-flow discussion about addressing that concern. And I don't know if you have any ideas about that?
Counselor Harris, not off the top, would be happy to sit down and talk about these things. Like we said, like Ms. Nyar said earlier, depending on the priorities or the objectives at the time, the chief will place them anywhere along that route when needed. We also have the ability to address changes in commands if that's needed as well, but would be really happy to sit down and discuss your opinion, your thoughts, and strategies as well.
I don't know if Counselor Davis wants to, because what I'd like to do is have a friendly amendment that, when it talks about, where's the Route 66, that just, we put in there from 98th Street to tramway.
Actually, Counselor Borrego would have the floor next, but if you don't mind, Counselor Borrego, if I can go to Counselor Davis, just because it's pertinent to what Counselor Davis is asking. It's fine.
Madam President and Counselor Harris, just to clarify for those in the public who weren't part of the bigger conversation, this originally was initiated as part of the process of working with businesses that were directly impacted by the ART construction and trying to prepare them to fulfill that public safety obligation. And so it actually goes 98th to Uptown, just following the ART route. There was some discussion with APD early in that process about, as you know, and you've been advocating for, about as the East Gateway, MRA, and other things come online, those policing strategies, I, without trying to speak for someone who's not here with us tonight, I think the answer we got was that they had a separate process they were working on with you that was more comprehensive than just Central, and so they thought that perhaps this would not be, this limiting language would not be as successful there. That said, you being the counselor, I think we're, we'll sort of have, welcome to have that discussion about whether the designation for Central is appropriate for this, or whether we keep this as an ART process and work with you on some of these other positions. So I defer to the other counselors for now.
So I think the request was if you would accept the friendly amendment?
I'm sorry, thank you, Madam President, for reminding me. I think I would prefer, I don't oppose having a vote or a conversation, I think I prefer to have a formal vote so all the counselors can weigh in on it, because it's something that was developed with all those counselors, and so I don't feel like I can just do that on my own.
I would actually, I don't know if Counselor Sanchez can hear us, or Counselor-
Yeah, I can hear you perfectly clear now. And I'd like to engage in this discussion. Basically, I think it's important that the entire corridor is involved in this, and because, you know, when it comes to crime, there are no boundaries, whether it's east or west of the corridor, you know, there needs to be protection throughout the corridor. But again, I think it should be also the discretion of the chief where those officers need to be, based on an emergency situation that is arising in the City of Albuquerque. But I do believe there is a definite need for additional officers along the corridor, not just in the downtown area, but the entire city corridor.
I agree. Counselor Borrego?
I agree with Counselor Sanchez. And with all due respect, Counselor Davis, I understand the need for probably more officers, but when I think about the duties and responsibilities of the administration and the duties and responsibilities of the council, you know, basically, the duties of the administration are day-to-day operations and services, and ours are more policy-related, and it seems to me like this was kind of an afterthought, with, you know, with all due respect. But it seems to me like the chief should be making those judgments in terms of where officers are needed and where the crime really, you know, is occurring and where we need to concentrate. I mean, we just asked, we just received support from the state of what, 50 officers? And I think the crimes, you know, that occurred, and we saw them happen very quickly last week, you know, I don't think that it's really in our purview to be sort of deciding, and if it's part of the greater program that you initiated a couple of weeks ago, then, I mean, I think it seems to me like there needs to be a little bit more thought given and a little more discussion with the chief. So that's, that's kind of my thought process.
So Counselor Borrego, so you're saying you support the friendly amendment?
I'm not going to support the bill.
No amendment at all?
No.
Counselor Davis.
Thank you, Madam President. And just to, so that we're all talking, having the same conversation, I want to be clear that the way the process was developed began with APD crime data, became with business associations and neighborhood associations, and with the administration and the Police Department in developing it. So that said, I just want to encourage that if Counselor Harris wants to ask us to do this, the way it, this narrative is sort of simple in a way of doing this, but the way the project is designed is actually designates a number of positions, two positions mostly, for each of the four area commands along that route. And so I think we would have to increase the designation to correspond with any additional area, at least the way it was designed with APD. It would still leave the administration with the ability, I think, to be flexible in how the chief designates those. But again, I think if we add an extra area to this at the last minute, we're going to have to add a designation of additional officers for that process. And I think that perhaps we could do that at a later date through a separate resolution that wouldn't be this program, wouldn't have a fiscal impact, but one that could be developed with APD to be sure it met their goals. And I would support that.
Counselor Benton.
Thank you, and I would support additional officer street, East Gateway as well. But yeah, as correctly stated, we're talking about, you know, the numbers would probably change. Also, this initiative was, as was mentioned, developed at the urging of business, business associations, and includes part of the initiative to do promotion for those associations. So we'd need to kind of work that out. I think there are some understandings when we came forward with the initiative with those associations that I want to at least weigh in with them or check their thoughts on this. But in principle, absolutely, I think it's a good concept, and it's a good concept for these important nodes along Central, including East Gateway. But I'd hate to confuse everybody now with having to on the fly calculate the numbers and changes we'd be talking about.
Counselor Harris.
Yes, so I don't know how, because this doesn't have numbers in it, so we could do 10 and then add the phrase "along the entire corridor," or maybe not say 98th to tramway, but that'll be, you know, along the entire corridor, maybe that's, language is good enough. And I think also, this is policy, as I understand it, and we're not actually directing the chief of police that you shall have so many police officers at this block. I mean, I don't think we're trying to do that. I think we're just, we're making a statement which is just a little bit stronger than an aspirational, just saying, let's focus on this. This is the, the Route 66 is something that is important to all of us up here and to the future of our city and economic growth. So I would like to do a friendly amendment, but how we get the 10 in here, if that's not in, is that someplace else in the bill?
Madam President, if I could respond?
Counselor, Counselor Davis, I actually wanted to go to the administration as well before-
Sure.
-just to kind of get their input. And is there such thing as a friendly amendment? Okay.
Thank you, Counsel President Peña. You know, of course, we, as I mentioned in my first comment, we agree with Counselor Borrego about the chief's discretion to place officers where he'd like. That said, this is, I read this as a suggestion to the administration, and to Counselor Winter's point, if you're looking at 80 new officers in the field, that's at least 10 per area command. This is an area that stretches through either four or five area commands, depending on the stretch. There are going to be eight or 10 new officers in that corridor no matter what, so that it doesn't, it would not actually be, I don't think, affecting our allocation of officers in any way, whether it passes or not.
Okay, so Counselor Harris.
I'll make the friendly amendment, but where, I'm just reading Counselor Davis's amendment, and I don't see the number eight on here. So where is the number?
Madam President, Counselor Harris?
First word? Oh, eight, sorry. So make that, make it 10 of the additional police officers. I was looking for the number, not the word, so sorry about that. 10 of the additional police officers funded in FY '20 shall be designated for the Rediscover Route 66 Central Avenue Community Policing Initiative from 98th Street to tramway.
A second. So there's some-
So Madam President, I just want to clarify, so Counselor Harris is moving amendment one to floor amendment four, as he stated into the record. Counselor Winter.
So while we're, thank you, Madam President, while we're making friendly amendments, I want to make a friendly amendment to add the Northeast Heights initiative to this , too. Thank you. Just, this is getting into some inside baseball now, but the cosponsors of the amendment were also funding out of our set of sites, the actual equipment and bicycles for these units. Just, this has been developed over some time and effort, again, with existing business associations. So that's my only trepidation about the- So that's my only trepidation about the, the friendly amendment or amendment.
Counsel Gibson.
Thank you, Madam President. So I won't be supporting the amendment to this amendment four, and that's because of the work that's gone into this so far, backed up by data. But I certainly would support, in the future, initiatives to, to achieve the same thing, but I, I don't think that this is a, an amendment that is, lends itself very well to, you know, just kind of adding on different places. But I understand that each, each district has their own multiple problem areas. District Seven definitely does as well, and we've been trying to get bicycle cops added for some time now. So I would prefer that this, that this amendment to amendment four not go forward, or at least, you know, let it fail, and then we just start anew with, you know, whatever districts want to, want to achieve the same. Thank you.
Counsel Davis.
I know we're beating this dead horse now, and I agree with, I agree with Counsel Gibson on those points, only because it took some while to get here. Counsel Harris, I don't disagree with you at all on this. I support the East Gateway work, and we share part of that international district, and we both share those concerns. I would strongly encourage and support the development of an additional resolution with the Community Police Plan that this council could endorse. As a standalone, it could be done anytime later. I just know that the dollars and the manpower and the, as Counsel Man appropriately noted, sort of the additional contribution from counselors and community members for their obligations to step up and participate in various things, took some time to develop, and I think it was done in a way that, as Ms. Nyer noted, supported the administration's community policing sort of strategies in this area. So I think it would be best served if we said no to this and passed this, this initiative tonight, and then support Counsel Harris in the development of that with the foothills area command, so they could have the appropriate one for that area, and perhaps one for Counsel Winter in Northeast as well, as we bring these new officers onboard. It's important that we start to have these conversations about the right thing, and I think this council could help do that, through that process.
All right. So let's keep beating that horse.
Sounds like my, sounds like my amendment just became unfriendly.
Okay, so we have an amendment to amendment, a friendly amendment to amendment number four. All those in favor, say yes and raise your hand. Yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no? And raise your hand?
No.
So, did you get that? Okay, so that motion passes. We are now back on the, nope, on the amendment. So there's a motion and a second for floor amendment number four. Counsel Davis, you want to add anything?
Urges support.
All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no?
I said yes. I don't know if you can hear me, Counsel President Pena?
Eight to one. The amendment passes eight to one. So now we are actually back on the bill, and so we need to, so we have a, a motion and a second for R. 138 as substituted and amended. There's no other, there's a motion and a second, so all those in favor, if there's no other discussion, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no? Opposed, no? Motion passes. Thank you. Thank you, Counsel Jones, for all your work on this. So we are now on, Counsel Gibson, one, oh, okay, we're going to take a break now.
Thank you, Counsel Pena.